All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trinity DeBurrus, present. Councilmember Kim Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Larry Hilberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Caroline McCooly.
Here.
Mayor Sean Loman.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a call.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda order?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. Move on to one E. Any new conflicts of interest?
No change.
Nope, all right.
No.
Great. All right, moves us on to item two, the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with a council vote unless a council member or a member of the public requests an item be pulled from consent for discussion. Items pulled will be addressed after council completes its consent counter vote and will require a separate motion. Anything anybody wants to pull from the council?
Yes, I would like to pull item two B for continuation to the next meeting.
Okay. Any items from the public? Right. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar minus two B?
I'll move we approve the consent calendar with the exception of item two B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great. All right. Do you want to have any discussion on it or do you just want to take a vote on moving it?
I'd just like to go ahead and, you know, accept any available public comment and then make a motion that we continue it to the next meeting.
Great, thanks. Any public comment on item two B? Nothing online? Saying none? All right, can I get a motion to approve the moving of item two B to the next agenda?
A motion to continue item two B to the next meeting.
Let me go see.
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Item two B is moved to the next agenda. All right, moves on to item three, agency reports. Plaush County Sheriff. Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening. Sergeant Toby Williams, Plaush County Sheriff's Office. How's everyone? Good. Let's see, some things of note from October. We had 173 total calls for service, up 33 from last month. Thirty-two suspicious circumstances calls, 34 traffic stops, up from 25, and we have double the amount of arrests at 14 as opposed to seven last month. Great news, Deputy Boyer, who works the city of Colfax on this side of the week, so Sunday through Wednesday during swing shift, has secured a grant, $86,000 grant for the city of Colfax and Loomis for enhanced traffic enforcement. We got that from, or he got that, excuse me, from the office of the California Office of Traffic Safety, and it's going to be used splitting the two cities that we contract with in speed, bikes and pedestrian-related traffic, distracted driving and DUIs. They're in four-hour increments, so these deputies will be coming in prior or after their shifts. And there's a certain number of deputies that are qualified to do this. These are all guys who are what we call traffic trained. So aside from normal accidents, they can do the DUIs, they can do speed surveys and things of that nature. So I told him that Loomis better not hog it all. But rest assured that we're going to be splitting it accordingly. So I'm not sure when it starts, if it's going to be immediately or in the weeks to come, but hopefully you'll see another vehicle up here doing some enforcement work and that extends all the way through the 30th of next year of September, excuse me. So hopefully that'll improve some things around here as well, traffic-wise.
Could you tell me, is it normally within the job description that he would be chasing grants or was he going above and beyond in chasing and obtaining this grant?
He chased it on his own.
That's wonderful. Can he be at the next meeting for us to thank him personally because?
I give a shot. Absolutely.
That would be great.
Yeah, no problem. Let's see. That was the biggest, biggest good news. Myself and Deputy Krieger, who works on the day shift side, Wednesday through Saturday, both of us have been selected to go to a winter search and rescue course. So basically it's learning to freeze in a good way. So, but at the same time with the geography that we have around here, that's just going to benefit us because now we actually have a winter search and rescue certified, well, A sergeant and then B a deputy who can assist in the event people get lost or trapped up and around here. So otherwise, business as usual. Yes, sir.
Say that they're going to be on either four hours before these arguments or four hours after.
Correct.
You're going to have 12 hours then?
Uh, 14. Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep, no problem. Yes, ma'am.
People are going out, they know, and between, you know, Applegate and Colfax, and I need extremely aggressive drivers, kind of deep loss, leaving them out.
That's predominantly CHP. Yeah, this, so this grant is, to my understanding anyway, and I can clarify that with Deputy Boyer, but it's exclusive to the enforcement actions within the city limits of Colfax and then the town of Loomis. So. Yes, but that's, CHP is also primary jurisdiction. We can enforce it, absolutely. But not to say that they won't necessarily do any or not do any enforcement action, but it's predominantly going to be in this area. And of course, if they happen to come to and from up or below the city, they can take action if they need to. Yes. The California Office of Traffic Safety. Yes. Yes, ma'am. Nope, this, this is completely separate. And on a lot of things, they'll stop it.
Let us know, you know, that he's learned a few things.
Good.
It's really made a big difference.
Good. Absolutely, no problem.
I just have to say that I've heard that from several other people also, how much of a difference they've already noticed. So we really, really appreciate it.
Absolutely. No problem. Thank you.
All right.
Anything else?
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, nobody from HOPE Patrol or CalFire nonprofits? Do you have any nonprofits somewhere? Brandy?
Hi, I'm Brandy, and I am, this is my first time, I'm nervous, sorry guys. I'm with the Colfax Area Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to let everyone know that we are in the process of looking for board members, specifically an executive director and a secretary. And if anyone is interested, they should reach out to us through the chamber email or by telephone. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Hi, Carolyn Glenn Preston from the Wrecking Crew Bakery. I wanted to give an update on the trunk or treat and how well this went this year. We were surprised in the fact that we had candy donations coming out our ears. My pool table in the back room was piled high with candy, and we did not run out. We actually had a few bags left over and those will be repurposed. But there was no kids that went without candy. We actually went the whole time and never ran out. We did hand out a lot of candy. A lot of people still underestimate how much candy they're going to go through, but we were there and we were prepared and we would like to thank our community immensely for all the donations that we received and appreciate it. And I want to reiterate that this event is ran by the Wrecking Crew Bakery and Cafe. This was something that I took on last year because it was another event that got dropped by another nonprofit and with, with good reason, and I just couldn't see it not happening. So I took this on and myself and my crew run it, and we ran it last year through the chamber. This year, I went to Caroline McCooly and asked her if we could run it through Railroad Days and the 3rd of July. She was happy to do that. But this is solely my event, mine and mine alone, and I take all responsibility for that event. I also want to state that we are now officially got our DBA and are moving forward with the Colfax 3rd of July as a our own entity, and I will be in charge of that. And and I, I also wanted to touch base a little bit on something that I ran across this last week and I was not overly enjoyed with because it came back to me as somebody that wanted to get involved with our community, but they chose not to because of a mess of a subject that keeps coming up time and time again. Now, I had a nice conversation with Larry this week over this, and, and I really appreciated having that conversation because Larry and I don't get to talk that often. I did, was pretty upset, and I felt the same way that this gentleman felt in the fact that it kind of, the whole conversation kind of turned me off from wanting to volunteer my time. And I, I had to rethink that, and I had to remind myself and be reminded of why I'm doing service to my community. I raised my kids here. I've watched other kids raised here their whole lives. I have many grandkids here, and I want them involved in their community. I want them to see involvement in their community. I want them to grow with their community. I want them to give back as much as they get from our community. And when we see friction and hostility and arguments and fighting, they're not seeing that. I'm not seeing that, and I cannot pass the good vibes on to my, my future, your future, our future. So I rethought that, and I'm not giving up. I'm giving as much as I can to my community until I can't give anymore, and then I hope my kids and my grandkids pick that up and move forward with it, and that our community can grow. We have a lot of great energy in this community. We have a lot of great people working towards bettering our community. I would hope that we could focus on some more positive inputs from people. But I do want to remind people that, yes, it is important for our council and our city and our workers in our town to be involved in these events, to organize these events, to put their energy into these events. And it is encouraged. It creates good leadership. It shows tremendous involvement. And I know other people are doing it for the same reasons I'm doing it. They actually moved to this town to engage their kids in this kind of community, and I would like to encourage that more and more. And I think that we've done a great job in the last year bringing more and more to our town, and I'd like to see that growing a more positive and workable environment with everybody instead of having any finger pointing, any hostilities, and any blame. We're not looking for the glory. None of us are. I think we all want to see our community grow. I don't want to see it become stagnant. And to be frank, I worked downtown for four years before taking on that bakery, and it was stagnant. It was going nowhere. And if we let our community die, none of us walk away benefiting from that. None of us. So let's, let's try and work together better and be more positive about it. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
I want to, I want to express that we are going to be doing a separate event for the tree lighting this year. We don't want to involve it with the Winter Fest because I didn't even know we did it, to tell you the truth, because it gets, you know, thrown into the midst of all the other festivities, the parade and the, the Winter Fest. So we're going to create a, a tree lighting on its own, and hopefully we're shooting for November 30th or no, or December 2nd. And Railroad Days and the 3rd of July will be sponsoring this, and we will be, the Wrecking Crew will be working it. We want to see, we're trying to get music down there, and we're going to have a cocoa bar, and we're trying to get an adult cocoa bar going. So we'll be filing that paperwork tomorrow, and we will be making this happen. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I wasn't planning on coming or would have worn different attire, so please excuse that. I'm here.
Shirt's awesome.
With a headache as well, but I'm still here. Sonia Keller, President this year of the Colfax Seroptimus Club, and our main focus of being here is to let you know the soup kitchen is back. And Tina, can you pass one of these out to the council members? We're shaking it up a little bit this year. We're doing it different, guys. Instead of all the Seroptimus members making soup along with our famous clam chowder, my leadership style as president is to be more inclusive, and so we are including the community in our soup kitchen. And we have a bunch of our wonderful restaurants, including the Wrecking Crew, and Snapdragon and TJ's, and then a lot of our service clubs, the veterans, the lions, that are going to be making kettles of soup. And so we're trying to represent the different groups within the community to make people more aware of what is in their Colfax community. We're also going to be doing a People's Choice Award this year. So like I said, we're shaking it up a little bit. I'm here today to see if we can talk to, talk one or more of our prestigious council members into making a big kettle of soup, and that's about a three gallons of soup, which would be served to the public. It is one of the biggest fundraisers for Seroptimus. And if you don't know, Seroptimus was started in 1921 as a women's service club out of Oakland, California, because two women were not allowed to join the men's clubs. And now we're an international organization. One of the major things that we do every year is give a scholarship to a woman that is head of household with dependents, could be parents or children. In most cases, they've left a bad situation, domestic violence, human trafficking. Maybe their, their spouse died or their spouse left, and now they're having to start all over again. And we give an educational scholarship to empower, economic empowerment for that woman in our family. So that's one of the biggest things that we do. We also give scholarships to females at high school. We try to give our scholarship to kind of, I don't want to say an underdog, but an underrepresented female student. We don't want it to go to the female student that's getting 10 other scholarships. So maybe someone going to a trade school, or maybe someone that's going to a junior scol- college before going to a university. So we do that as well, and we're very involved in different functions and have attended just about all the events in Colfax this year that have been out there. We've been there side by side with everyone else. So we want to encourage you guys to think about making a kettle of soup. We are going to be providing acknowledgement of who that soup is made by, and we're going to have a tree of sponsorship acknowledgement as well. And also, we didn't know if you guys are in the position of possibly doing a donation for some tickets that could possibly get, be given to some of the seniors in our senior apartment community, so they could eat free. So we wanted to throw that out there too, if that's something that the council could do, purchase a certain amount of tickets that could be given to the senior community for them to participate for free.
How many are you thinking?
Tina?
Fifty?
How many? Fifty. Or whatever number you're comfortable with. I'll throw that out there. I'm pretty flexible. And the pricing? Oh, the QR code is right on the other flyer that goes directly to our Give Better, where you can go online and purchase tickets ahead of time. We are going to be having raffles as well. It's going to be on the same day as Winter Fest from 4:00 to 6:30. So most people come and eat soup first, go down to Winter Fest, or they go to Winter Fest first and then come up and eat hot soup with us to warm up. So we hope to see you guys there. I know I see Kim Douglas there almost every year.
When do you need the soup by? Like, can you pick it up earlier in the week or what is your?
Well, we are going on December 12th. We're going to be doing setup from 1:00 to 3:00, and folks can come there and they can also come in the evening, I believe, from 5:00 to 7:00 to prepare their soup. We're really encouraging folks to use a commercial kitchen. And so we have the commercial kitchen already paid, paid for, so they can do it there. Or they can make it and drop it off between those hours. It's going to be a little challenging having 15 to 20 kettles of soup, and we rotate them, but heating them up all the same time. So for dropping it off, we're strongly encouraging those that are making it, dropping it off if they can, at 3:30 warmed already, so we don't have to heat it from a cold refrigeration cold, you know, to a hot, because with that amount of soup, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. We're work, working that out, but this is the first year we've done it in that format. Usually a Seroptimus bring the soup already warmed up. So we would prefer you, if you're donating it, to drop it off at 3:30. And again, we have the commercial kitchen available for use on December 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 and 5:00 to 7:00, and then the Seroptimus will be there by 3:30 on the 13th. And Tina too, Tina can help pick up as well. Tina's been in charge of getting our community together. I just came from TJ's and they're donating chili for our event. But the community has been really receptive. US Bank is doing it. The dental business over by Marvell's is doing a kettle. I think Katz Animal Sanctuary, we're really trying to involve the community.
Just going to say, how do you want the council members to connect with you if they're going to be able to?
Tina's the best contact person, and I think the phone number on the flyer is our, one of our chairs, I believe that is Pam Rex's. You can contact Tina, you can contact I. I know a lot of you guys probably have both of our phone numbers. And we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm sure we'll talk about it and go to the order, but I'm sure we can put something on the agenda for our next meeting to do the donation. Yep.
Yay. Erin Newington with the Historic Colfax Downtown Association. Wanted to give you an update. We started a community partnership program that has been super successful. We brought on multiple businesses in the downtown that are funding our mission, so we're super grateful for that. Also, we had our Colfax Bazaar next weekend, or last weekend, excuse me. It was super successful. We had more vendors than we had last time. We had more attendance than we had last time, which the first one was super successful. Main Street was full of activity, which was really the point of the whole event. Yes, the vendors help us pay for marketing and such, but our overall mission has always been to bring more traffic downtown, and we feel like we achieved that this weekend. So we're super grateful for everybody who came out and attended, and for those vendors who invested in us, because you know, it's, it's kind of scary sometimes when you launch a new event, you don't always know how it's going to be received. And so when vendors sign up with us, they take sort of a risk, and it was super awesome to hear how well each one of them did. So it was a great success. I did want to publicly state our interest. I know when we attended the community meeting about Winter Fest, there was a miscommunication in our outreach to help with that particular event, and so should the city decide that maybe events aren't in their wheelhouse or they decide to move it to a nonprofit, we would just ask, we are super excited to volunteer for Winter Fest 2026 if that should be available.
Thank you. Any other nonprofits tonight? No. We did have CalFire shut. Chief Seaver, you got the report. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Clint Seaver, CalFire, Plaush County Fire Department. I have the statistics for last month. The Colfax Station ran a total of four vegetation fires, five residential structure fires, five vehicle fires, and 36 medical aids for a total of 78 total calls out of the Colfax Station. For us, we are still burning with permit required right now. I know it's kind of strange with how much rain we're getting, but with the new setup that we're doing with moving all of our staffing to December 15th, it's kind of a new system that we're trying to implement. So bear with us as this new storm moves in, we are planning here to go to open burning very soon. So once we go into open burning, you can burn without a permit, but it does have to still be a regularly burned day through air quality. So make sure that you check to make sure it is a burn day before you burn. I do have the statistic for the last five years of commercial vehicle fires through the Interstate 80 corridor. Now, this does cover from Blue Canyon all the way down into Applegate. It's a total of 239 confirmed commercial vehicle fires. That's tractor trailers that are coming down Highway 80. This does not include smoke checks, hot brakes, which are kind of our false alarms for those. There will be a driver that's pulled over with hot brakes only. So no confirmed fire that's not in the statistic. We just had a total of 239 confirmed commercial vehicle fires. That's some statistic that we've talked about through past couple meetings. We are working closely to get the Christmas tree again for this year like we did last year, and that'll be off of our demonstration forest. Hopefully in the same area and a little bit better condition than we did last year. I think we've, we've figured that out and we've got a better system for this year. So hopefully we can get a little bit better tree. We will be staffed available for Winter Fest and attending that as well, and we'll be around for all the other events that are happening here in town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to, let's see, item four, we got no presentations. Item five, no public hearings tonight, so move on to item six, public comment. It's time for any member of the public to address council for items that are not on the agenda. We cannot act on these items, however, we can include them on the future agenda. Please speak clearly, and you'll have five minutes. Give your. Go ahead. Brandon, thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Loman, council members. Brandon Sanders, Sierra Division, Government Affairs, PG&E. It's been quite a while since I dropped in. Just wanted to take an opportunity tonight to come and say hello. I've met all of you except Councilmember Hilberg. I would love to grab a cup of coffee with you sometime, and I know we have a lot of activity going on in the city right now as it relates to our undergrounding portfolio. We're working hard on that. This is the single most effective way to eliminate risk from power lines as it relates to fires, but it also has a major impact during low snow events because the outage activity would be significantly lower if the stuff's in the ground. So really just want to thank the community in the city for support of that program. I kind of describe it as short-term pain for permanent gain. Once that stuff's in the ground, it'll be there in perpetuity, and it's a really positive thing. I kind of describe it as short-term pain for permanent gain. Once that stuff's in the ground, it'll be there in perpetuity and it's a really positive thing for the community. The one other item I would share is we have in recent years deployed a new wildfire mitigation tactic referred to as enhanced power line safety settings. These are sensitivity settings on our automated devices that will immediately turn off the power when a circuit is contacted by vegetation or an animal or a third-party vehicle, any number of things. And we do understand that there has been more frequent outage activity in the Sierra foothills as a result of the deployment of that tool. But I will also say that it has reduced wildfire ignitions from our overhead equipment by nearly two-thirds year over year, so it's really effective. It's much better than those public safety power shut-offs. I'm not trying to give anybody PTSD, but those were pretty rough for a while there. So just really just grateful to the community of Colfax. You know, I just popped up from Auburn. I'm just down the hill. But mainly just wanted to come in, sort of reintroduce myself, let you know that you have an advocate. I work for PG&E, but I'm an advocate for local government. I remain available to all of you if you have any concerns about our work or questions about how we operate. And if perhaps in Q1 of next year, if you wanted a kind of a comprehensive presentation with the slide deck about all the different things going on, I'd be happy to provide that as well. So maybe Ron can just reach out if the council decides they want that and we'll make it happen. So anyways, just wanted to pop in mainly, say hello. Your clerk has my card, so it can kind of float to the top of your pile. And please reach out if I can be any assistance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment? Anybody else? Later. During the Winterfest. Any other public comment tonight? No? All right. I was waiting for it. That's why I kept giving it a minute. Come on up.
Nice.
Aw, thanks.
Jack smiles, Colfax Skateboard Park. Bring back Colfax PD. Make Colfax fun. And be nice, since my sister's here, too. So have you guys taken any bids yet? No?
It hasn't closed yet.
I guess it's been because I've been looking online. I play a few, so that's it. I'll be good, like I said.
All right. Thanks, Jackson. We're working on it. Any other public comment? Tonight? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to, I don't think I need it. All right, move on to item seven, council staff reports. Kim?
Okay, on the thirtieth, as it was mentioned, we had the trunk or treat, which is the best one I've ever seen, and I've seen them all. And it sets a good example because we don't need a lot of expensive fireworks to have a wonderful event. And then on the third, I'm the representative liaison at the Sierra Vista Center. And I was informed that my term is over, so someone sitting here will have to replace me. So the person that smiles the biggest gets to replace me. No. And then the fifth, all of us were here for a workshop for the Winterfest. And then on the sixth, down in Auburn, I attended a meeting where Cindy Gufferson gave her State of the Union speech. And that went very well. And then on the eighth was the bazaar, which was already mentioned, which is another good way to get people away from home and off of Zoom and and meeting other people. All these little events help get you to meet your neighbor and you take more pride. If you take more pride in your community, you're going to volunteer more. So it's a rolling stone that will gather more volunteers. And that's all. Thank you.
I attended the Bianchini Board Meeting. No really reportable action, I don't think. Secondly, I did attend the bazaar and I didn't get there till about noon. And there was still a lot of people wandering all around town and visiting all our local businesses. And they filled up the parking lots and the streets over there, so seems like that was a really successful event. On Tuesday, just yesterday, I guess that was, I attended the dedication of the the images that were painted behind the memorial hall. And it was very well attended and I'm really glad I went. I enjoyed it very much. And Sean represented us very well, made a very short and succinct presentation, very much appreciated. It was pretty awesome. And then I went to the Chambers Coffee and Conversation, which they have on the first Friday of every month at eight o'clock in the morning. I invite you all to attend if you're interested in what's going on in this town. And they often have a guest speaker. This time Josh Alpine spoke about PCWA. And it was a very interesting talk and I think I observed it, hearing Josh is like getting a drink at a fire hydrant. But he knows a lot of people and he talks very fast and it was very educational. That covers it.
Thank you. Trinity?
I have nothing reportable this evening.
Carolina? I always go through my calendar to see what falls in these two weeks. So we had the Chili Cook Off that happened at the end of last month that the third of July put on. It was very, very well attended. We had a great crowd. They had a good time. Didn't matter that my weather report was wrong. It said it was supposed to stop raining and it didn't. It drizzled. But fortunately, the third of July had just bought some really big tents to be able to use and they came in quite handy for that. So the crowd seemed like they were having a great time, hung out for a couple hours. They didn't care about the drizzle and the rain. They had a blast, it seemed, so that was fun. I did get to attend a brief little meeting over at the museum. The Colfax Heritage Moving the Caboose Project had put in for a grant with the United Auburn Indian Community. And they actually came over to the museum and checked out the museum where we would like, they want to put more of their items on display and talked about the grant they put in a request. So I know that they are crossing their fingers that that's going to come through for them. We did have the Bianchini Board Meeting that Kim and I are on. And one of the things that hopefully is going to fall, is going to be able to happen, they have started a subcommittee to look at sharing with the community the fact that the money that the Bianchini has to give out every year is available for any of the nonprofits in the community, is not solely for the use for the Sierra Vista Center. So they are looking at creating kind of like a grant and an application program and a way to be able to market that to our other nonprofits. So I'm really excited to see that portion moving forward. And Kim and Red and Foxy are all on the group. They're going to work on that together. So I'm very excited to see that happen. We had our Winterfest workshop and then, yeah, the mural dedication that a bunch of us went to was fantastic. The American Legion and the VFW put it on and they had some amazing artists. If you guys haven't been up there, definitely go check out the pictures. And it was quite an event to have, so.
Thank you. So I've had a regular Fire Safe Council meeting. Our regular LAFCO meeting. Also had a special Fire Safe Council coordination meeting with the county and Cal Fire to work on redistricting of the Fire Safe Councils possibly and try and get some better coordination between the different councils. I attended the VFW Pancake Breakfast on the second Sunday of the month, second Sunday every month. And also was honored to attend and be one of the presenters of the service memorial dedication. And that's all I had. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've spent quite a lot of time over the last two weeks finding contractors and securing agreements to keep the city operating while we're filling open positions. I attended a meeting with Fourleaf and Cal ES to discuss the FEMA Home Hardening Grant and time spacing between Phase One and Phase Two, which FEMA has called in for up to two years and we're telling them no. So we'll see how that comes out. Of course, it's FEMA. Also, I attended the dedication ribbon cutting ceremony for the new service memorial wall. Fabulous, fabulous turnout, great, great art up there. Handed out candy at trunk or treat event this year. I think it's the first time for City Hall to be handing out candy, so that was good times. But I'm going to need a little help next year. I had to pull Kim in just so I could go wash my hands. Maintenance has purchased sandbags, sand and sandbags for the winter storm events. The sand pile is in the same pile that the compost is, was sitting, so it's easy to find. Maintenance also been replacing burned out street lamps. We removed the trash dumpsters from the ball field, haven't had any further problems with trash up there since then. They're continuing to do drywall work in the inside of the courtyard in rainy days. And if you've ever noticed, there's a missing chunk of blacktop curb on Rising Sun that was allowing water to get into one of the neighbors' yards, so we came through and remade that curb this week. And that's all yet.
Great, thank you. I did forget to mention, I didn't make it to Colfax Bazaar. I signed my wife instead. She was much more effective at buying stuff than I would have been, so she had a great time. She said it was a great event. There are tons of stuff and she came back with some great items. Awesome. Great work. All right, that moves on.
Sorry, could I ask really quick? City Manager and City Attorney, could you guys please report out on the status of the grand jury report? I don't believe that this has been before council yet and I'm concerned that it hasn't been yet.
That's, that's on me. I needed some additional information from the city. I got that earlier this week. I will have the report on the next agenda.
Could you brief the council on what it is? Because I think, I think at least half the council doesn't even know about it.
The Plastra County Grand Jury met and reviewed the the cities in Plastra County's compliance with ethics laws requiring sexual harassment training and financial conflicts of interests training. You have to do an hour of training a year. It's two hours every two years. It's effectively an hour a year. They made, they did an audit of the local cities' record keeping and they made some recommendations about improving that record keeping. And that was the part I needed a little bit more information on specifically how Colfax maintains those records, what the process is. I think I have that now. So the grand jury report is a recommendation. We do need to respond to that and I apologize that I haven't gotten the response out yet. But I'll go ahead and prepare that response and submit it to the council for approval and then we will get that to the grand jury.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Connor. I just needed to make sure that the council was aware that we are currently out of compliance. Our response was due in September. We were given an extension till October. And it has not been before council yet, so I needed to make sure that we had that transparency and awareness that we are currently out of compliance. So when it does come before council, it will not be something that we can, you know, spend significant time deliberating on. We will need to timely move it forward so that we can get back into compliance.
Yes, thank you. We have been working on that to make sure it gets done. And we have been in contact with the, or person of the grand jury to make sure we're good. So we're on, we're on top of it. It's taking a little bit longer. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
June, thereabouts.
Sorry, when did we first learn about that?
June of July.
So the findings from the report come out in the end of June and then we have ninety days usually to submit or sixty to ninety days and for this county, it's ninety days to submit a response. And then if we need more time, as often happens, then we can request more time. As long as we're in contact, we're, we're okay, usually.
I'm not sure of the method, but I echo what Trinity said. I would like to have known about that sometime before now.
Usually the report is provided once the attorney has time to.
This, this is, this is on me. I'm, I'm really sorry about the delay.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
We'll get it out in December.
It unfortunately was one of those things where, you know, Brown Act, you can't talk about it outside of an open session. So with that being said, feedback to staff, I would just ask that in the future, if we have any required response pending from any other agency or anything where there's a legal requirement of this body, if we can at least get a report out on it, letting us know that there is that impending deadline. That way, you know, we can have your back in that request for any extensions, anything like that. And then that way we can all meaningfully speak to the fact that we supported the extension and we knew about it.
Understood, yes. There's no legal risk to the city here. It's, it is a recommendation that we can make comment on.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments. All right. Yeah. All right, we'll move on to item eight, council business. Item eight A, just a heads up, I'm going to ask if we can move this to possibly December. I didn't, I'm really sorry. I ran out of time to really dig into this as much as I wanted to. Yeah, it's a lot and it's, I've been kind of busy and I haven't really dug into legalities and all that of the public trust too much. So if the council is okay with that, I'd like to make a motion that we move item eight A to future agenda. Possibly December.
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
I would just ask, would you take any public comment? And then, yeah, I'm good with continuing it.
Okay, cool. All right, since we have item eight A on the agenda, is there any public comment on this item before we continue it to the next meeting? Nope. Okay, okay. Come on up.
Hi, Sharon Connors. I have a question. Well, can you explain a little bit what it's about to us?
Yeah, go ahead, Trinity. It's your item.
So this was a policy initiative that I had proposed to council, what was it, a couple meetings ago? And the primary concept here is that we have found ourselves in multiple occasions struggling to have an appropriate method for the collection of funds or the disbursement of funds as it relates to nonprofits, grants, et cetera. And taking from example with Plastra County and other jurisdictions who use community foundations, they essentially have a nonprofit group that's independent from the government body with whom they are able to work succinctly to, you know, provide for a number of community needs that are more appropriately handled by a nonprofit or that would be able to receive more funding by going through nonprofits. So for example, you know, I did put a couple of different jurisdictions that have done this, like Plastra County, Truckee and stuff like Tahoe, where they've been able to partner with a community foundation in order to maximize funding pools, meet, get government matches specifically around affordable housing and community development. And so in concept, what I'm proposing is that we form a Colfax Community Foundation, which would be comprised of board members from all of our nonprofit groups. So that way we have one succinct nonprofit voice that we can turn to in order to better serve our community. And then the trust funds, those are basically separated out special funds that you may have noticed on like your tax bill in the past. You have an option to donate additional money to any one of the funds that Plastra County lists on there. Those funds are then administered by the county itself, but they will disperse them through that nonprofit when appropriate. So it makes it so that you have more tools in the toolbox to be able to, you know, collect private funding and be able to basically get philanthropy donations that otherwise would be very difficult to obtain as a government agency.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate that. That's good thing.
Any other public comment on this item? Make a motion that we continue the item?
A second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm staying opposed. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. All right, move on to item eight B. Denise Burness requests to honor Dr. Fox. City Manager, do you want to kick this?
Yes, Denise Burness, daughter of Geraldine Bartlett, has contacted the city on behalf of her mother, who would like to make a donation in order to honor Dr. Fox. The donation would be for something along the lines of a commemorative plaque or a garden or something. We just need some direction from council, which way we want to go with this.
Are there any specific suggestions?
It was pretty open-ended, but from the letter in the packet. We'll go ahead and take some public comment on this and we'll bring it back to us for discussion. Do we have any public comment on this item?
On Dr. Fox, maybe some ideas?
Any comments? Nope. Okay. Any comments? Nope, okay.
I don't know if you guys are aware, I mean, I'm sure all of you are, the statues that are in Auburn that his father, brother and him worked on building years ago together. Maybe do some kind of miniature statue somewhere?
Some mini, mini naked statues?
Yeah. Some, no, not many. No, something that represents him more, but you know, it might be a nice gesture. I don't know. That's all I can think of, other than I love the garden idea, but you know.
Gotta find a spot for it.
Yeah, you gotta find a spot for it and everything, so I don't know. Uh, just that, that I know that it's something he, his family took great pride in. It's the statue, so maybe something along those lines, I don't know.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, bring it back to council for discussion.
I know we've got subcommittees at our ears, but I mean, maybe we can assign a couple council members to solicit some feedback and work on that in the background and bring something back for recommendation. I think we definitely need some brainstorming and maybe they can work with, you know, our local arts people.
Yeah, and verify dollar amount. I know time is kind of of the F's and so too. So.
I think the dollar amount is, knowing what kind of, what they're looking at is going to be able to help us make a decision. I think gardens and plantings are beautiful, but that also requires a lot of maintenance, so that makes me more hesitant to it. You know, and we've got some, several different rocks out and different planners that have placards on them. We've got benches all over. So I know, and I know like the Heritage Park is also looking at doing some things along those lines, memorial bricks to go with things. So I think there's a lot of options, but without knowing what dollar amount they want to run in, it's a challenge to do, but I think it's a great idea.
I'm a fan of plaque on building or plaque on boulder.
Yeah.
Near building. Something like that.
That's where I'd be coming from, a plaque right on his office.
My concern about putting it on the building, because I know that was some, I don't remember if she mentioned it or somebody else had. If something happens to that building, do we lose that plaque? So I, I would want to make sure it's placed on something that is less likely to, to have something happen to it. So that was my concern. Cause I, I remember in a conversation I had somebody talked about something at, at his office, and I would be concerned something happening to the building itself and, and losing that plaque, so.
Or something they put out in front of the Colfax Record Building.
Yeah.
He's so deserving. I, I remember a time when I was trying to roll a big piece of ponderosa pine and I split my lip wide open. And I was bleeding all over the place and I drove off in my car because I knew Dr. Fox and Kay would be walking their little dogs. And I found them and I called out and I said, Dr. Fox, do you take street calls? And, and he said, what's going on? And I showed him, he said, go to my office, I'll be there in five minutes. That, that's who Dr. Fox is, and I know many have had experiences just like that.
Definitely. Kim? Excellent. Yep. Definitely, huge asset to the community too. Okay, well, do you guys want to do a little subcommittee thing? And talk about it, or you want to just provide some direction? It sounds like we're kind of all looking toward plaque. Now, we proposed a couple ideas to the city manager. If we each, if you guys have a specific idea, just drop one to them and we can follow that up and then we can do the approval on the December meeting. It can just be kind of independent. All right. Cool, then, uh, direction to staff is, uh, we'll reach back out, figure out a dollar amount, and then what we can do for a plaque and, uh, something to put the plaque on. And, uh, we're looking at the area maybe around his building on the corner there, front of building, somewhere around there. Probably.
I mean, I'm open to that. I'm also open to us thinking a little more, um, robustly, because there are so many people that have contributed so much to this community, and we're getting a lot more of these types of requests lately. Um, and so I don't know if we want to think about, you know, how we're going to continue to honor people appropriately going forward because maybe there needs to be one location where we do a much larger honoring of multiple people while still, you know, respecting their individual contributions. The problem is, is I, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't have the creative juice at the moment. But this may be a good call to the community now. If you guys have good ideas, if you can send them into our staff, that would be fantastic. Yeah.
And so we can throw in space ideas if we're, if we want to send them on areas we might think, we might want to put this besides that is office and, uh, just have all that together, then we can make that decision on where it goes.
But I'm open to whatever.
What we're doing at the next meeting.
I mean, I think something that's more central, you know, downtown, the, the station, something along those lines is better because more people are going to see it. Not as many people will see it, how many people walk past that?
By his house.
So I, to me, any types of things along those lines should be more centrally located.
I would say my biggest concern is just making sure, like, it was already brought up that whatever it is is long-term protected and maintained, and that's much easier to do when we've got good accounting for all of the different memorials and honoring.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Have you guys thought about it? And I don't know the logistics of it, but the area that's being used a lot is that art area about maybe putting some permanent benches kind of around the outside walls. Um, in there for people that maybe have mobility issues and folding chairs might be hard to get, you know, in and out of, something a little more stable. Um, and maybe you could honor people, you know, if you did, you know, benches kind of lining in a horseshoe shape. And then maybe even some of the service clubs could purchase, um, benches to go there as well. Um, and then instead of recognizing, you know, one person in a service club, you're, the lions are being recognized. The Sroptimus, the VFW could have a bench. And it, that, that square is being used a lot, just something to throw out there.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Direction cleared, bud?
Yeah, I'm asking what they want to submit. Yeah, I was kind of just thinking maybe we'll just do an honor wall by Roy Toms or something where we can just continuously add plaques or however we want in a central location with good lighting. Somewhere where people could easily see them all.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I would love that.
Okay. And we'll, uh, we'll have that ready for the next meeting. All right. No action to take on that one side's direction, so we'll move on to item eight C, Brianna Harbach, request to rename the art park, uh, for father. City manager, you want to kick us off? All right. That was it.
Yeah.
She was like, the, uh, council considered renaming the art park, uh, to honor her father Scott Miles.
Like to add in that this is also Jackson's request too. So.
Yeah.
The plaque, yes. Yep, yep. Cool.
Yeah. I would just make one correction to the staff report, and it does mention in the letter and then in the staff report that the property was donated, but we purchased the property in two thousand nineteen for forty-five thousand dollars. And then the adjacent parcel from Bob Marson, uh, in twenty twenty for twenty-two thousand five hundred. So I just think that, that, that's something that we should look at too, because the Lot of Arts is a two, two-piece acquired from Marson and from the Miles family through a purchase. And so maybe, you know, we might want to consider some augmentation of the name there to include Marson, or maybe we want to consider an art piece, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to make sure that we corrected the record there, because that was a mistake in the staff report.
Yeah, and I'd like to add too that the, uh, the Lot of Arts, that whole concept occurred when the land was all still privately owned. And, uh, the person Mel Henderson was the one that really pulled all that together. And so leaving behind either Mel or Marson's probably isn't the right thing to do. We should recognize all of them.
Yeah, if you look in the staff report, I took a picture of the tiles out and there's three different, uh, family names on the tiles.
So we're going to do a little, something a little bit more substantial, including all three names. Um, so definitely, um, looking at that, so.
To rename a whole park with those three names, so I think it needs to be something a little bit more back to that whole placard idea stuff that we're looking at, but you can't get all three in the name, unfortunately.
Okay, it's just not. So, um.
Which I like the idea. I do. I like the idea and concept. It's just unfortunately, it's very difficult to, uh, really capture everyone who contributed by naming it after a single individual, especially when there was purchases involved. That makes it kind of hard.
So look into also creating a dedication there for, to include the three families. We can come up with a mock-up of something, a couple of mock-ups that we can look at for a council meeting. This is more to get a little bit of discussion on what we're looking for and, and get some ideas, so.
Call to the artists and the creative people in town.
There you go.
Right there, to come up with some suggestions of how we can appropriately recognize all three of these families and their contribution and their. I mean, while it's a lot to put into a name, you could also take all those names and turn them into plaques, roll and attach them to the fence somehow and put them.
Oh, absolutely. And we could definitely, you know, do a plaque or something on the actual fencing or, you know, something very visible. I know that that was mentioned. Um, we definitely need to refurb the existing tiles, because those are now kind of part of our history. But I think that there's some good ideas. I've even got a few ideas floating around in my brain. Um, I'll pitch them over to staff and
Keep working on it.
Yeah.
But yeah, anybody. It's creative and seeing those things, we want your two cents work, because I'm kind of like Trinity, my creativity limit is very low right now.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we're all kind of on the same page. We include all three families and, uh, well, we can all individually pitch ideas to staff to have a few, I, maybe we'll come back with three ideas, uh, to look at at the next council meeting, and maybe hopefully have something to approve.
Okay.
All right. There you go. Okay. Now move on to item eight. I'm sorry, I didn't take any public comment on that. So, sorry, come on up.
Will Stockwin, five two five Pine Street. I would really suggest that you keep Mel Henderson in mind on this. Without Mel Henderson, there would not be a park out there. Before Mel came along and looked at that waste ground that had been sitting there collecting junk lumber and old tires since the nineteen thirties. That's how long it was a piece of waste ground. Mel converted it. You're thinking about a plaque, make it a big plaque, because there's a lot of people who contributed to putting that thing together. I was on the crew that poured the stage. I can see a plaque with more than a hundred names on it. Those are the people who built the park. So just, don't just make it three people. A lot of people worked on it. It's time to give those people some credit. Think bigger, large plaque. And Mel Henderson is the guy who started all of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The wall directly adjacent, I understand that that building is privately owned. Um, we've gotten permission in the past to paint that wall and do murals. Can we look into, maybe in the background, what we can come up with, maybe with the private property owner to make that, that wall something that's protected with the city so that we're able to potentially put things on it and know that they're going to stay there going forward? I know we can, there's a number of private agreements we could come up with. We might already have one. I just want to look into that, because that may dictate the direction we go with this.
They're jotting it down. Thanks. Any other public comment on this item?
Will, do you have a list of those hundreds of names? Can, can you work on one? Okay, because that, that would be really helpful i- if we can get a starting point, so we know what we're looking at, that would. Okay. Okay.
And also mentioned, Mel Henderson was the first and only director of art in public places. And that was, that he was given that by the, by the Colfax Council. But anyway, I can get some names.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Now we'll move on to item eight D, the Halloween decorating contest. City manager or Caroline?
Or Karen. However you want to do it. All right, um, I need, let's, let's do a, uh, for a second. Well, you can pass them along and I can tally them up if you like. Oh, I'm open. I, that's why I gave sheets or verbal either way.
Yeah. Here, I sent an email in, so I just rewrote it for him. Um, I, it was nice. We ha- we only had three people participate, so I'm really hopeful that next year we have more of them. We have the two businesses and it was entertaining, because they started having a little, you know, battle between the two of them. Both Cocos and the wrecking crew were having a fantastic time, talking a lot of smack between the two of them. And I did pop my head in the door. You, um, you need to be aware, Caroline, that they've already started decorating for the, for the Christmas lights contest. So hopefully we'll have more people participating next year. Um, and I do want to recognize, we did have one household, the O'Briens, that, um, had participated as well. And it, you know, good things start small and that's fine, that's okay, but the Christmas light contest is coming up too, so keep that in mind. That's why I emailed it to him, so he could tally it up, you know.
If you had a chance to go look at him, if you want to vote.
Um, I know I posted pictures, I can dig up pictures on my.
You want to double check? You guys want to look at them when we do the Winter Fest update and come back to it?
Yes, okay.
Okay, see you head nods. All right, we're going to hold this item and go ahead and come back to it. Get a good tally. Hold you in suspense as long as we can.
Next time, let's put some pics in the agenda.
All right, so you can, you can scroll through this. The first ones that came into the house, so if you want, you can pass on just arrow back and forth, and then you've got the two businesses, so. I just threw a couple from each one of the places in there, so. The picture I didn't have from Cocos was the actively throwing up skeleton that they had. But you saw it, uh, it, it, drunk or treated, yeah. I thought it was fantastic.
So you guys want to move on to AE and have some discussion? Or you guys want to just take a look at this and finish up?
Give them a five minute break if you want.
All right, let's go ahead and take a five minute recess while they sort out the paperwork and, uh, we'll come right back to it. All right, everybody, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Thank you all. And, uh, city manager, do you have the votes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have the votes. Number one this year, Coco's Ice Cream and Candy. Number two this year was Sarah O'Brien and number three was Wrecking Crew. Thanks, everyone for.
All right, congratulations, David. And thank you all for decorating.
Are here to collect them.
It was the O'Brien family. That's O'Brien. Um, what was it? Sarah? Is that the first name? Uh, they're on Treasure. Mink Creek. It was Treasure Ten Street.
Two, two, three, Treasure Ten Street.
Yeah. Which is a lot of name. And Will, if you, if you want pictures, when you go to do the connection, I can send some because I went by the house and took pictures and stuff, so. Okay, I will send them to you.
Yes, oh, I screwed that up. Good catch.
Hold on, wait, counting is questionable.
Counting is questionable. Hold on. There's an attorney sitting there.
Not an accountant, just the attorney.
So that would be third. The second, so Wrecking Creek be first. All right, sorry. Thank God there's somebody here that can count because I can't. Coco's is third.
Oh.
O'Brien's is second, Wrecking Crew is first.
All right, congratulations, Wrecking Crew.
I keep telling you then.
I, I see why city managers get us.
Next time, Connor, Connor, you're doing the tallying next time. Look at it.
I keep telling you, I'm horribly dyslexic. Me and my English agree.
And the O'Briens were second and Coco's was third, is that right?
Okay. Now we got. All right, now that we got the counting out of the way.
That was the important part. That's the only reason these people are here.
Right? For most parts.
Next time we do one of these, can we, um, work with IT to put a public poll on our website with a closing date and then let the public participate? Because this is too much pressure for us. I, I said next time can, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was originally set up for council to judge. Is, is how we started, but we can clearly look at different ways to judge.
We can do both, different judging categories. All right. Yes, we could definitely add that into the next decorating contest we have.
Which is in December, so it's right around the corner. I'm just trying to remind them all.
Thank you. Yep, Christmas decorating contest. Yeah, but yeah, we usually get a lot of, a lot of people for that one, so. All right. Got all that done? Any public comment on that? No? Good. All right, uh, we'll move on to item eight E, Winterfest event update.
Right, uh, tonight, uh, council will provide an update on the planning report review and discuss the budget and consider to, uh, vote formally to authorize the city manager to administer and coordinate the event and use city resources.
Thank you. Caroline, do you want to kick off the update?
An update. I can update off the magic. Turn that on. Um, as we said before, our food spots have been filled for quite a long time. Our food vendors love to come up here. Um, which is a good thing because our businesses get swamped at the same time, so everybody stays happy, which is definitely a plus. Um, we are at a total of, let's see, thirty vendors. Um, for about forty something spaces, so we still have a little bit more craft room available if people want. Uh, to go in there, we always have space set aside for CHP, the sheriff and, uh, Cal Fire, so that is added in there. So that means we're about forty-three spots are already taken. Uh, so incoming funding just from that, we have just over four thousand dollars that has come in to help pay for everything just off the space uh, fees from that. Um, I did receive an email today from one of our staff members that we did have a donation check come in from Gold Miner Pest Control. Um, so there is a check in the building for that. I however, do not know the dollar amount because, uh, I did not ask her that question. Um, but I'll find that out tomorrow, I'm sure. So we know we have one of those coming in that's already been received. Um, so we, from, on everything I've got on my end, we are right on track, so. There you go.
Great. Well, um, still reaching out to businesses. I have, uh, five hundred dollars to pick up from, um, GSPC. And, uh, I know A and A just got their paperwork for, uh, what they, the last of the paperwork they needed to provide their twenty-five hundred dollar donation. Um, Pioneer Energy is providing twenty-five hundred dollar donation. Um, still working on reaching back out to confirm. I don't have access to the email that the the checks are coming into, so I'm not a hundred percent sure who else has turned in money. Um, but I do have several other or many other, um, businesses that have verbally committed, so keep working on that. Other than that, I think we're looking pretty good. Well, uh, yeah, as soon, as soon as we're done with the update, I'll call for public comments. You got an update on the trash cans? Kim, any update on your stuff?
They haven't responded yet, giving us the donation.
But the request is in and, and we're good to go on that one. Awesome.
Yeah. If you'll come and see me tomorrow, I'll give you the new general manager's, uh, contact information.
Tony's not there anymore. Oh, I need that. Do we have an estimate on what that would be for any reason that we're to fall through? Uh, I'm just doing some quick math on a napkin.
I had a meeting with them and they indicated that they were, um, on board.
Okay, so it's just fine.
But I had, I didn't know where Kim was with them, so I didn't get too far in, but they were on board with that.
I think that's the updates for Winterfest for where we're at. Um, go ahead and.
Well, I, I mean, I know the, did you got the budget paperwork? Is that what you were looking for, Larry? Because I know that was one of the questions. So are you?
Yeah, I was gonna wait till after public comment, but I wonder if you'd clarify, um, how, how many actual dollars or commitments do we have for donations? I didn't hear what you said.
Unless he said.
So do we actually have money yet or no?
We have some money in as far as what, uh, what is actually, and I do not have that number. But I do know that we've had about ten thousand dollars and, uh, and verbal confirmations, so. If, uh, all those come through, that's about where we're at. So should be more than enough to cover what we need to.
Do we anticipate that any of the committed funds will be coming in after the need for expenditures? I'm basi, I'm basically wondering if we need to do a inter fund loan.
I couldn't tell you. I am putting as much pressure on everybody as I can, but, uh, I, I can't, uh, I can't. I don't really know for sure. I can't give you a one hundred percent on that. My guess is though, there will be some trickle in af, in and after. And definitely there's plenty coming in after today, so. Um, I think the numbers you have are based off of what's been promised and what, between what's been promised and what's come in, so it's kind of incorporating all that.
I know some organizations operate on our net thirty, so I just wanted to see if we need to do a temporary inter fund loan until those were able to bridge in and.
That takes, that take a lot of stress off of me.
Yeah.
Wanted to do that, but.
The numbers in front of us, we can, we can clearly indicate direction to staff to move specific amounts around, so that's great.
Right, okay.
I mean, overall, um, some of these bills absolutely have to be paid ahead of time. I know, um, I mean, I don't know what our insurance is when they would bill us for that portion of their funds, um. And the county, I would imagine, is a little flexible too on the portion that is theirs. Uh, I know that the, uh, porta potties are usually paid the day of. Um, now, I, I can tell you that if you operate on cash, it gets cheaper, but I don't think the city can do that. Um, and then the, the pyrotechnics guy usually is given a check that night, so the day of, so. But there's a little bit of wiggle room on the billing. I think that's something that we can address at next, uh, our next meeting in December and once we see what comes in here over the next couple.
Are we gonna be, how, how soon do we have to book the fireworks? I guess is probably a good question. How?
They are, they're, they are technically booked right now. Um, Caroline can report on that better than I can because I know she had continued to reach out to the other group that had done them in the past and they weren't being very responsive if.
About a deposit?
Yes.
That's wonderful.
The guys that did the Fourth of July are more than willing and ready to come back for Winterfest, but I am, we are contacting our, she, I did get information to contact another company and, uh, I have not heard back from them yet, but um, I expect to, so I'm sure that they will reach out. Um, I just recently, I, I had gotten the information and recently bought a new phone after losing my old one and I lost, I lost that confirmation, contact number, and I just recently reached back out to them, so. Um, should be hearing back from them anytime soon, I imagine, and, uh, if not, the other guys are on board and willing to go and ready to go. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, no, go ahead.
Sorry, the mic was on. Um, do we know the current fund balance for our typical nonprofit fund that we would normally draw from for this type of events?
Uh, nineteen thousand.
Okay.
Um, the other thing to discuss, I believe that we had put a halt or we hadn't ordered the banners yet because I think somebody had wanted to see the designs that, um, Gary from graphics, uh, Galaxy Graphics had designed. So you guys all have a printout of what Gary had designed for, um, this. So that is what is there. So it, one of the directions that we can give is to make sure, because like I said, I don't think that order went through, I think, for the banners. Yeah, so we do need to get those ordered because technically the banners would have, would be going up tomorrow normally, but but, uh, everything was kind of put on a, a, a hold after our last week's meeting. So unless there's any concerns, like I said, he's already designed them. He's been paid for his design services on that and the digital banner should already be going up. Uh, probably tomorrow, um, but we need to get the, the rest of the banners ordered super quick and the county is the one that is printing them. Uh, so you guys should have the printout. That was the design that Gary had provided, so.
So we have the money in the account right now to cover the banners.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, Larry, I can see you're ready to make some comments.
No, I was gonna ask, are we gonna take public comment before we really get into it or are we expected to do that now?
Yeah, we're just trying to get some, get some baseline right now so that we know what we want to talk about and then we can have a public comment. So, um, anything else from council before public comment? And we can come back to it for more discussion.
I just want to throw down my initial thought here based on everything we just discussed so that if the public wants to comment on it, they can.
Yeah, please do.
Kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking, I'm prepared to do from everything that's been presented is authorize, um, the expenditure of up to sixteen thousand dollars from the dedicated Winterfest fund. Do an inter fund loan of ten thousand dollars from the nonprofit fund to the Winterfest fund to be reconciled by the end of January. And do a five hundred dollar donation contribution from the nonprofit fund to the Winterfest fund as an allocation towards the event that should cover the net expense, um, pretty well. It's only two sixty-one right now. So that's kind of my baseline where I'm sitting right now and then we can. I don't know if anyone else has a different thought, but I wanted to throw that out there. So if the public wanted to comment on that idea, then it was there.
Good place to start. Thank you. Larry, did you, go ahead.
Well, my only comment is the one I've made in previous meetings. I don't think it's appropriate to use that nonprofit money. Temporarily, I can get that, but this budget. Temporarily, I can get that, but this budget here shows that it's gonna cover itself, that the expenses match, so. I'm not sure. Right, I understand, and there's two things that can happen, right? We could make a profit and we could take a loss. And I'm gonna be interested in what do we do if we make a profit, for example, because we don't want to make a profit. And what do we do? Where are the bucks gonna come from if we take a loss?
So when we originally put out the fund for the nonprofits, Winterfest, the Winterfest event was included in that, because it's normally run by a nonprofit. The city's nonprofit is running this, it's just under the city. So I would say if we made a profit, the profit would go to the next person running Winterfest, and it would be held in that account, collecting interest for the entire year, until those funds needed to be expended for Winterfest specifically. Especially since the money was donated from businesses for Winterfest, it would need to stay in that account, or we'd have to return the money evenly to all the donators. So that would be my suggestion would be the city can just hold it in an account fund to continue it on, and if we're short, then I'm gonna have to come back and apologize, and we're gonna see what we're gonna do. And hopefully, we can agree to cover the costs out of the donation fund. I mean, we do have a considerable amount, because we were planning on supporting Winterfest, so we're not like behind in the fund or gonna be short on being able to donate to Ser Optimus or anything like that, so.
I will say, I don't know, I don't recall a conversation about this particular part. One of the benefits to using CNC events to run the bar is a portion of that comes back to the nonprofit, so there will be a check coming back. How off, how you know, how big it is, all depends on how the event goes, of course. But that money will be able to come back. Hopefully, it will be above and beyond. You know, hopefully, we'll get all those expenses covered, but that money would also be able to go back into that nonprofit fund, depending on what comes back from the bar, so.
So even better if we float the cash now, we can use that money that comes back in to repay that fund if we don't get enough business donations, because I've only reached out to businesses that don't that are either larger in the city as far as like construction and stuff like that, or businesses that come from outside the city and do business within the city. So I I haven't hit up any of our smaller, small businesses, so I'm really trying to make this not funded by the community and more funded by the larger businesses outside or the businesses that primarily operate in the city.
I only wanted this discussion to take place in public, so I got my wish and and we'll have it in a little bit.
All right. Kim, you got anything for this? Now you're good. Okay, public comment. Go ahead, sure.
I haven't heard anything about your budget. The exact dollar amount that you collected so far, is it in a special fund? What is your projections? Is this gonna cost the community anything?
Yeah, do you mind walking through that, Caroline?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I have a budget, okay.
Yeah, no, there is absolutely one. I'm pulling up one, the one we have right here. So there's two sides to look at, is of course, the expenses we're sending out and then what's coming in. From a coming in standpoint, just based on your booths for, of course, your food booths and whatnot. Ideally, that target should hit about, what did I say, seventy-five? Sorry, I went wrong. I opened the wrong piece of paper. So we're looking at about six thousand dollars coming in from the booths.
Okay.
Is is roughly what that would be at. We already, we have already achieved four thousand dollars of that, so I already have four thousand dollars in booth space.
Coming in, okay.
Yep, that's it.
How much have you gotten donations?
So the donations, there, there was one received today. I don't know what the dollar amount was for that, unfortunately. I don't know that. As Sean said, he has verbal commitments from companies for about ten thousand dollars worth.
How much do you have now?
I don't know what the check is that's sitting in there. I cannot answer that question.
One check has come in?
From the donation stack, yes.
That we've heard of, but I know Pioneer got their paperwork and cut a check, so there should be the other twenty-five hundred there. I've only been raising funds for the last thirty days, so I've just, I've been putting the pedal to the metal, and it takes a little bit for companies to cut checks and bring them in. So we're going off of verbal confirmation, people that I've talked to that have said, yes, we'd absolutely love to commit this dollar amount, or we're.
And what's that estimate?
Right around ten thousand dollars.
From the expenses that we have anticipated, that's gonna include the porta potties, the fireworks, the insurance, the permit to the county, and then the graphics design, that total estimate, I just changed it. Lord, I hate technology sometimes. Hold on, sorry, my my cell is changing. That is just under sixteen thousand, so that's the projected expense is just under sixteen thousand.
Does that include fireworks?
This, yeah, that that's, yeah, because we got to update the, the graphics went way down when the county is able to print in, print the banners. That dropped it down on that. So yeah, looking at this, like I said, we have an estimated thirteen hundred on the porta potties, twelve thousand for the fireworks, just under thirteen hundred for the insurance. But we were looking five, six, seven, eight, just under nine hundred for the graphics, and that changed. Yeah, and then the county is a five hundred dollar permit.
And so the total comes up to sixteen thousand?
Just under sixteen, yeah.
Okay, so with your booth and donations, you should be covered. You shouldn't need to borrow any money from the.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Between the booth and the donations, you shouldn't have to get any money from the city, right?
That's definitely the hope, without a doubt. So I mean, I we have a plan, absolutely. That's, the plan is there.
And that's what we're discussing right now.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, because we don't, the community shouldn't have to bear this.
Well, I mean, you gotta remember that the the fund that we have for the nonprofits was increased solely so that we could support the fireworks for the third and for Winterfest.
Right.
We're, you know, Sean's doing everything in his powers to make sure that we don't even have to pull out of that account for Winterfest. But it's always in the back of the head that that's why we increased that account to the thirty thousand dollars that it is right now.
We probably want to increase it a lot more, because you have a lot of nonprofits. I mean, fireworks takes up the majority of everything.
So.
And you really, you know, we have nonprofits that that could really benefit in the community.
We've, we've, we've been able to meet the needs of every nonprofit that has come in, even though there's been some discussion on what, how much we give or when, or, you know, it does, is this gonna go right? We've been our priority, and we have, we have made sure that we've kept that fund enough to meet all the needs, and we also have room to increase that fund should the need come up.
Okay.
And within our general fund budget, so.
Sounds good that you've got it all covered.
We're, we're working on it.
You've got it covered.
We're, we're trying, we're trying, yeah. There's, I'm not gonna say I have the total amount of funds covered yet, because the checks are not in, but I am working on it every single day. I'm making those calls, and I'm I'm doing what I can to get that money in, so that we do not have to take out of that fund, and we can roll it over to next year and have even more for the next nonprofit.
To be clear, though, we do have commitment from three donators for twenty-five hundred and from four donators for one thousand. They've given written confirmations of some kind. Verbal, okay.
I have two emails for sure, and most of it's been back and forth just on the phone, and then sending them the paperwork, and then following up with them to get them the W nines or whatever other paperwork they need to be able to cut a check to us. And that's been what most of this process has been, is trying to make sure that they have what they need to cut us a check.
I mean, honestly, the A and A Concrete is donating, and their check would be here, but we had a little glitch in getting them that W nine when we had the staffing adjustments, so there was just a little delay there, but they they've got it, so.
Harry, go ahead.
Hi, Harry Anderson.
Thank you for waiting patient.
GB Galaxy Graphics and Dr. Harry, the Sales M D. You know, at the last meeting, I had volunteered our company to, you know, try to improve on the Winterfest banner from the previous year. And little did I know, when I called my partner and talked to him and told him that you know, we had an opportunity, he goes, it's already done. I said, excuse me? He said, it's already done. It's already done, shipped, paid for, it's all handled. Really? Oh. So per your request, Caroline, leaving me out of the loop, not having to deal with me, obviously, has happened, because I had no clue that we were doing this at all. But in, in his explanation about what was going on, he said he was only asked to do the artwork and that somebody else was gonna do the printing, which makes no sense to us, because quite frankly, Caroline had made a comment to Caroline that you can't beat their quality, price, and service. So I'm a little confused as to how you can pay for design time and then go to somebody else and get the banner printed, and it would be cheaper than us.
That's because Placer County has generously offered to print the banners at cost or less, basically.
So do we have public knowledge of what that cost is, so we can compare?
Uh, the, what I was sent from them is three hundred and five dollars and thirty-three cents.
For what?
That should cover, let's see, you want, you want actual sizes and quantities or just how many banners?
Okay, so there's a breakdown of that somewhere?
Um, I mean, I, this is, this is, well, no, this is your price sheet. This is, this is just the design. So let me, give me a second to find the email that was sent directly. Give me one moment, and I'll find you what the order was it was. It's gonna take me just a second to get the right email. So give me a moment. Okay, so it is six four by sixes, three four by eights, two four by twenties. And it is three seventy-two fifty-two.
Can we make that public information?
I just did.
I mean, if this is out.
It's, it's, I mean, it's recorded, you can write it down, and you can go back and find it, but yeah, it is six, nine, eleven banners for just under four hundred dollars, and that is the printer that is done through the county.
Okay. To be fair, it should be a public knowledge, because this is, this, we're right here in front of God.
But I, I mean, I just told you that makes it public knowledge, because now.
I'm not writing it all down.
Um, it's, it's on recording, fortunately. You can go back and find it.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's it.
Thanks, Eric. All right.
By the looks of the design, it looks like that this is a reusable item, because it says second Saturday, doesn't say that an actual date. So if that is the case, which is smart, there's nothing wrong with doing that. But my question is, who owns this, once it's paid for? And if some other five oh one three C wants to make an attempt to take over Winterfest, do they get this info? Do they get the banners and everything?
Absolutely.
Paid for them?
Yep, anything that, this is all part of the, part of the Winterfest event, so any extra money we get, any banners, any extra equipment, everything will go to the next nonprofit to go ahead and take it over.
Okay, because that, that's a good program.
Yeah.
That cuts the expenses for the next year.
Yeah, yeah, that, we definitely want to carry this event on and make it as easy for the next person as possible, because hopefully, somebody else will take it. And hopefully, you will take it.
The Downtown Association would love to take it. As I mentioned before, we did reach out in multiple ways, expressed our interest, and there was a communication gap, so for two thousand twenty-six, like I said, I have six board members ready to step up and and run with it, so we would love that opportunity. So you guys have a big decision in front of you. We're, here's the thing that I know, a lot of people don't realize what I do for a living. I am actually a real estate agent, and so promises don't count, and I'm just gonna put that out to you. I love the work that you're doing. I'm not trying to put down the work that you're doing, but until somebody signs a contract, sends me a check, closes a deal, the deal isn't done. And so when you're making this decision, I would hope that you would take it into consideration. I I did hear multiple instances of checks that, you know, were delayed because of a W nine and whatnot, and so those are definitely more solid promises than the others. But when you're making your decision, a check is a check is a check in your hand, and we don't have many of them. And so my concern is the fact that you had a community meeting, we had four people in the room, it wasn't recorded, people couldn't log in and give their opinion or raise their hand on Zoom, and you're making a decision based on what we've always done, and I've sat up here a lot of times and expressed my interest in challenging the status quo. We, we can't always do what we've always done. Is a thirteen thousand dollar firework investment really gonna give us the return on investment that we need for our city? Could we invest that thirteen thousand dollars in another way that would serve our community at a higher level? And that's the decision in front of you tonight. So I really think it comes down to return on investment. You didn't have any community input, the room's not full. My personal humble opinion is save the thirteen thousand dollars and invest it in something else like decorating downtown, bringing in other cheaper attractions. And there's a lot of community spirit happening in this event without the fireworks, including the Lions Club Parade. The vendors, it's a delightful event. We don't need to spend the thirteen grand.
Thank you. Say whatever you want.
I I understand there is always a little bit of discussion about the fireworks, because of what it does cost, and and I think it's something that's come up almost every time the fireworks are involved. But I I can say that I know one for what I hear in the public, those are some of their favorite things. They love it. The parade and the fireworks are things that our community loves, and while we absolutely love all of our visitors and we need them and want them, it truly is a celebration for our community, so we want to make sure that we're doing something that the, the community wants as much as possible. That being said, we know the fireworks are also a draw. There are very few fireworks that happen in December, and while there's lots of fireworks that happen in July, because of what happened this year, unfortunately, with fireworks around the neighbor, the neighboring communities, we had a much bigger event because we had fireworks. Even the sheriff has said we pulled in several thousand more people than normal because we had fireworks. So obviously, those fireworks are a very big draw for people to come into our community, to learn that we have a downtown, to learn that we have these businesses, enjoy it, be able to come back down later. And when you start looking at social media after our events, the fireworks are what you see pictures of, the fireworks are what you hear the conversations about. So I get it, it's hard to picture a thousand dollars a minute going up in flames as we watch them. But overall, the the feedback you get from the community as a whole is that that is one of their favorite parts on both events that we have them at, so. I think we have to keep them.
I'm gonna have to say I agree. I I went out after the last meeting, the last workshop, and I talked to a whole bunch of people, and while I did get quite a few people that said they would, for a smaller event, I think the vast majority enjoyed the event the way it's, it's going, having all the options, and not fireworks is a highlight of the event. Just kind of what I heard when I was out doing outreach to try and figure out which way I wanted to go on this, because so got a lot more comments about not doing fireworks and keeping this event smaller this year, so I just wanted to try and get a little bit more pulse on the community and see what people thought, and that's kind of what I ended up hearing, was people like the event the way it is and enjoy fireworks and all that, and so I, I challenge any other nonprofit to take it on, and please do, please do the event the way you you'd like, but I think we're gonna I think we're hopefully looking at sticking with what we're planning already, because it's kind of late to change, but is there any other public comment on this item?
I don't know how many of you remember that last year was a little bit of a disaster with Winterfest because of the weather. But when it boiled down to it at the end of the show, end of the day, it cleared up enough for the fireworks, and our town was packed with people. Where we may not like spending that little bit of money to make people happy, but one of my favorite, I I prefer fireworks during the winter, sorry, Winterfest is one of my favorite. Fourth of July is one of my favorite, but the fireworks in winter is absolutely beautiful, and I have heard nobody, not one person, say, well, let's not have fireworks. I've heard well, yeah, and yes and no, but I think people look forward to them, and and I'd hate to see that go, but you know, it's what brought people out last year, so I I would have to say it works, so. And it brought people, it brings people to town. It it is, it is an attraction, and it benefits the event, and we have two major events a year, and those both involve the fireworks. The the smaller events are bringing more and more people to town, so we need to keep those going, and and I think the bigger events support that, so. I'm for them.
Thank you. Go ahead. I I'm not, I'm not gonna stifle public comment, please, come on up.
My question, how did it come about that the city took over this event? Because I believe she just came up and said that she had. Because I believe she just came up and said that she had corresponded that they wanted to do the event.
Yeah, I can handle that, so. We had the workshop, we kinda talked about it, we didn't necessarily nail a nonprofit, we had our original workshop. Erin was pre desp, busy doing another event of the many events that she has done successfully. And we missed that communication, so we jumped on it and we kinda divvied up stuff and just started going for it.
So you didn't miss her, her request?
Yeah, or, and she wasn't at the workshop for, you know. To nail it down, it wasn't intentional to not have a different nonprofit. You know, for, take over the event, I mean, I, I have full confidence that their nonprofit would absolutely rock this event.
Right.
So, it, it was.
The workshop advertised.
Through all our normal channels, through, so same, same way as a council meeting.
At the council meeting?
Same way as.
Facebook or, or, uh, and through the chamber or anything like that? Notices?
No, it was the same, same notice as any other public workshop, same notice as any other council meeting.
It'd be helpful though to do, cause I get the Chamber Newsletter and everybody reads that, that to post things like that. So if you're asking the community for involvement, I just think it's a good idea.
Yeah, absolutely, it'd be definitely a problem that if the Chamber is interested in adding that to the newsletter, we can make sure that they get all of our events and workshops and all that. If we, if we plan the workshop in time, sometimes we have to do emergency workshops, we do them within a twenty-four hour notice or whatever, so, but.
There are exceptions always.
Right, but yeah, we can definitely do our best to make sure that we're noticing through there too. That's a great suggestion.
Alright, thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I was gonna back, I completely spaced, I had a second part that I wanted to say. Um, but that was, I absolutely acknowledge Erin's comment that new things work, new things can work and be tried. And that's one of the reasons that I made the suggestion to pull the tree lighting off of Winterfest. Was to give it something new and different and change it up a little bit. You know, there, there's definitely nothing wrong with trying different things down the line as long as you're keeping a pulse on your community. Um, as to what it is that, what they love about the events, but. And, and that's why, like I said, moving that, the tree lighting off of it, so one, we have our tree for a little bit longer and give another event for the community come to and to be able to enjoy. So that goes right along with what you were saying, Erin, that you don't always have to keep it the same, we can always change it up and improve it a little bit, so. Well, that was, cause it was my idea and I came and said, can we do this? That, that's what it came down to, yeah. I, I had the idea of pulling it off and gave the reasons as to why, that I think it should be a separate event and I asked. Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Larry, go ahead. Um, any other public comment on this item? No, we're all good. Just on, just on the Winterfest item. Alright, no? All good? Alright, was there public comment on the item then? Larry, go ahead.
Unless I got my dates all wrong, I believe Erin communicated her interest before we took it on.
Yes, no, she did.
If you look at the calendar, right, and so. I know it's been set up here that we didn't wanna do it, but apparently we did. Not sure what to accept, I, I just wanna make a few comments here. Number one is that I think it's a bad idea there is city to run the event. I think that. Oops, sorry, my finger touched, uh, again, I want the public to hear that. I don't think it's a good idea for the city to run an event like that. Um, another comment is, uh. If, if the numbers, just the bottom line numbers for expenses and income. If they're different than what was in the agenda packet, I'd like to know what they are. I mean, I, I, I accepted this as, as, as the final numbers, but it sounds like the numbers moved on us.
Carolyn, can you confirm what I just basically stole from your spreadsheet here? Uh, it sounds like there are four single food space vendors, seven double food space vendors, forty.
Oh, I don't, I don't want the detail.
Need to confirm it to confirm the. Forty craft, three nonprofit, one storefront, six first responder spaces at zero cost. Um, a sponsorship of twenty-five hundred dollars, there are three people who've made that donation commitment. And for one thousand dollar sponsorship, we have four pe, four different groups that have made that commitment, uh, is that correct?
Okay, on the vendors, what you're looking at is your projections, so this isn't what has been paid, this is what.
These are.
Yeah, this is your projections.
Okay.
Right here, so that's roughly what there is now, the, the food spaces, that, that's right on, cause that's already paid for.
Right.
The craft is what you still, the craft and the nonprofit is what. So if you go, we go to that tab for you.
I just wanna know the total.
Yeah, so I mean, the total that's been paid in booths right now is. The total number of vendors right now. Well, they're all in one spreadsheet.
Got you.
You have twenty-nine vendors that are officially signed up, I don't.
Okay.
You know, Cal Fire, uh, commit, said yes, they're gonna be there. Um, so, so you have twenty-nine vendors that are signed up and paid for right now, not, and some of those are more than one space. You know, it just depends on what their spec, their, it's, but you wanna know how many craft that is?
Yes, please.
Okay. Oh, they're, they're foods, but, oh, he's gonna, sorry, they didn't color code them the way I color code these, I, but I don't create it.
This is gonna help confirm the current numbers.
Two. Three.
While we're going over those numbers, I just wanna help Larry with his questions.
All I wanna know is total expenses and total income, that's it.
Yeah.
What are they?
Or, I'm sorry, uh, whoever asked when we approved stuff, so we had our ad hoc committee. Our first assignment of an ad hoc committee for Oktoberfest and Winterfest was on May twenty-eighth. And we approved, uh. We approved you and Kim to be part of that ad hoc committee and then we changed that at a subsequent meeting. For us, for the three of us to do stuff, once we actually started assigning jobs.
So you and Carolyn were the committee and Kim was separately assigned jobs, or you and Kim were the committee and?
So, Kim and Larry were the original committee that we approved on the twenty-eighth and then.
So then who was the new committee, cause it can only be two?
Yeah, then, then back.
It was you two, and then Kim was separately assigned duties. Okay.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I translated that.
Yeah, so we should have this discussion on May twenty-eighth. Erin talked, Erin took over Winterfest at that point and we assigned an ad hoc committee to start looking into Winterfest.
Looks like Erin took over Oktoberfest.
Yeah, yeah, that's what she said. So that was, uh, that was the first time we really had a in-depth discussion about it and then we had, uh. In October, I think was when we made the change.
Ten third.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll double check.
Okay, so I have eleven right now. And then two storefronts.
Cocos is in between, so no, there's, if you count Cocos, it's eleven food.
Okay, perfect, so they are doing storefront and or storefront or?
Yeah.
They're paying for both?
No, they're just, they're in the storefront.
They're doing storefront, okay.
We give our downtown businesses a discount to do a bit, to do a booth.
Doing a little number out here, they should be completed momentarily.
So.
Making sure.
If these numbers are the latest that we've got. We're showing fifteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars in revenues. And fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents in expenses. For a grand total of a deficit of five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and two cents. I'm showing immediate expenses, cause it sounds like we don't pay the fireworks vendor until the day of.
Yep.
So immediate expenses that would need to be covered prior to the event of three thousand eight hundred and eighteen and two cents. So based on that information, what I would suggest as. Direction that, you know, if I'm making a motion, which I'm not just yet, cause we're still discussing. I would suggest that we do an inter-fund loan from fund two, or eight two six three, which is the one we typically use for nonprofits and events. Uh, we make that inter-fund loan in the amount of five thousand dollars. We would authorize the city manager to spend from the Winterfest fund, which is that dedicated fund for this event. Um, in order to coordinate and execute the event. And then we would, uh, contribute as the city's contribution monetarily to that Winterfest fund, not expected to be repaid. Uh, a donation of six hundred dollars. That would be my suggestion at this time, so. I do think that, um, while a lot of really great comments were made tonight about how we can do things better going forward. We are kinda locked in with the promises that have been made to the people who've already given money. And to the people who have already, you know, acquired merchandise and inventory for this event. Who have already planned on the typical Winterfest event, including fireworks as part of the plan. So I do feel that changing that at this time would really be disparaging to everybody who's already made commitments. I do think we have a duty to follow through with our commitment. Um, and I think that going forward, you know, again, we can definitely do better and, you know, this is where. A private fund, basically a trust fund was established for this in order to keep the funds clean and neat. And maybe in the future, what we do is we have trust funds for our big events. And that'll allow us to, you know, again, kind of seek out private philanthropy throughout the year and not necessarily hyper rely on council. Um, to go out and search for those funds, but, you know, maybe we'll be able to work with our other nonprofits to all help each other and. You know, fund these events throughout the year instead of having to scurry at the last minute. Cause this isn't fair to anybody who takes it on now or in the future. It's a lot of work.
I would say that in a different way, I think we got ahead of ourselves. We went off and did a lot of planning before we actually decided and committed to do this. And so now we're having to cover that. I'm uncomfortable with that. Um, so how much, how much money do we have in donations now? Cash in the bank? Do you have any?
There's a check sitting in the office, I do not know what the dollar amount is on it, I, I can't tell you.
Is it, is it from any of the people?
It's from Gold, it's from Gold Miner Pest Control, that was the email that I got today, but it did not have a dollar amount on it. So I, I can't tell you that, I have no idea.
A check without a dollar amount on it?
I don't know what it is, I, I received an email about it, she told me that it had come in, but she didn't give me a dollar amount on it.
I haven't seen any of the effort, what has come out of any of the efforts of my fundraising, I haven't seen the account, I have no idea what has actually come in personally. Staff has been handling that.
You, uh. Are you confident that you are speaking to the decision makers?
Yes, that's what has taken me so long to get to the right point.
So you got to the right people that.
Yes.
Should make that commitment, so you're confident it'll.
I'm as confident as I can be that we should have about a ten thousand, ten thousand dollars in donations coming in. I, again. When, when, when that staff. You know, until the check is here, I can't guarantee that, I don't know what other approval processes these businesses need to go through, what other, you know. What other things they've done, I got commitments for like full verbal, yes, we're definitely doing this. And people have already shuffled paperwork for at least two of the twenty-five hundred dollar spots and a thousand dollar spot. So I know I've at least got the five thousand or the, about six thousand, that's pretty much coming in, I have a guaranteed donation from GSBC that's five hundred. Um, Goldbonard, I don't remember what they said, and I have a guaranteed donation coming from Winter Chevy that's five hundred dollars. Um, and a couple other smaller hundreds and things like that, two fifties.
You're confident?
I, I have, I'm as confident as I can be, yes, like I said, without having the ca, cash in hand, yes, I've talked to these people and they have all.
So, the, if we took five thousand dollars from that nonprofit right now, as Trinity suggested. Then, uh, that would end up being covered because these, I mean, we're only about six hundred dollars apart. I mean, I realize these are just estimates.
Yeah.
But, um.
They're as close as they can be.
So that five thousand could go back rather than be.
Absolutely, that would be.
Rather than be stored forward for whoever might do this next year.
To be clear, what I was suggesting, uh, the five thousand dollar inter-fund loan is something that would be repaid back into, uh, fund eighty-two sixty-three. By the end of January.
Okay.
So this would just be an inter-fund loan, it would not be a designation of the funds. My suggestion was that our contribution monetarily would be six hundred dollars, that would not be expected to be repaid back into that fund.
And, uh, and so with that amount even, it sounds like we'd probably get that covered with the Beer Garden Funds or the other funds coming in. So there, even if I fall short in my fundraising goals and I've only had thirty days to freaking accomplish. Then I think that we have enough money coming in for the event to still cover the remainder. I also would like to point out that if this, if this, this was a nonprofit doing this, nobody would be questioning this like this. So this is, I mean, you guys are really putting the screws to me here to make this money, this feels really.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be questioning this if it was a nonprofit.
Right, and it is a nonprofit running it though, it's just the city's nonprofit that's running it and.
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
Okay, I, legally, it's the city's nonprofit, right, the city's nonprofit account and fund.
The, the city is paying for this event, the city is paying for this event out of its. The city is paying for this event out of its Economic Development Community Support Fund. Um, from, Ron and I just looked this up and from what we can tell, the money was appropriated for economic development and community support. So this is an appropriate use of those funds. The council typically refers to that as the nonprofit fund, but it, according to the budget the city adopted in twenty twenty-four. The money was appropriated for economic development and community support. So as.
So to be clear, that's eighty-two sixty-three.
Eighty-two sixty-three.
Now, to be clear, a separate fund was opened for Winterfest that is a dedicated fund in which deposits have been made.
I don't know anything about that.
Yes.
Right, and that's why I'm making sure the public's keeping track here. Um, the city, we are considered nonprofit in nature, a lot of people don't know this. But when you're doing your tax deductions, in the same way when you donate to a five oh one C three. Donations made to a government entity are also tax deductible. And in that sense, yes, we are very similar to what most people would call a nonprofit, a five oh one C three. We however are not a five oh one C three under IRS guidelines.
That's a different filing.
Yes.
Very similar, just handles different amounts of money.
And there are different reporting requirements, there are different rules that you follow. Um, and that is part of the, the hardship that we're under here with the city having to do this is, we have to follow the Brown Act. And it does, it does change the dynamic significantly and the amount of flexibility you have to plan a major event like this, especially when your main. Workhorses are council members who are the most subject to the Brown Act and the most subject to that transparency.
Just makes it so you can only work with two people.
Exactly, and, and it makes it really hard because we're only allowed to make decisions as one body and that, very difficult. Um, but that, that is, just to clarify the gap there, you know, we, we are still tax deductible. However, it, it definitely is not as flexible or smooth as when you put a nonprofit in charge. And that's part of why we're going through the budget publicly and transparently because. You know, we have to make sure that we're accountable to you guys. And so that way you guys know exactly where the money's going, where it's coming from, where it's expected to be returned to if we do an inter-fund loan. Um, and how much contribution would not be expected to be returned to that fund if we were to move forward in that direction.
My only comment would be that we ought to justify things first. And instead of afterwards. Uh, one of the comments in the agenda here is it, it says that, uh. Um, it's on page fifty-seven, fifty-nine. It says, uh, that at the first shot, at the conclusion of the workshop. It was determined by council that the city council and city staff would manage the Winterfest. I, we can't decide anything in a workshop, and so I'm not sure what that means.
We provided direction to staff. We told staff, you can go ahead and work on this. We didn't, that's not a voting thing, that's just a direction.
Well, it should have been a voting thing, right, if we can't determine or decide anything in a workshop.
Well, we can if it's agendized in that manner, which this was not agendized in that manner. We did give direction to staff to bring it back to this meeting, so that any official decisions could be made at this meeting. And that's why the budget is on the agenda, so that we could review the budget together publicly on a publicly broadcasted meeting. And here we are, now we're making the final decisions regarding the budget and any staff direction that we're making, that's my understanding.
Yeah, it's really awkward to do it right now, you know? We should have had this meeting a couple months ago and, and actually decided, I'm really uncomfortable with the way it came out.
Thank you. Hold my comments. Okay, uh, any other comments on this item?
I'm ready to make a motion whenever you're ready.
Anything from the public? Are you guys good? Okay. All right. What do you guys want to do?
I'm gonna go ahead and move that the city council authorize the city manager and staff to spend up to sixteen thousand dollars from the dedicated Winterfest Fund towards the event. Um, part two, I am also moving that we establish an inter fund loan from fund eighty-two sixty-three to the Winterfest Event Fund in the amount of five thousand dollars to cover media expenses that may not already be covered by revenues. And part three, I'm moving that the city make a donation to the Winterfest Fund in the amount of six hundred dollars separate from the inter fund loan that would not be expected to be repaid. The inter fund loan would be expected to be repaid to uh, fund eighty-two sixty-three by the end of January. If it is not able to be repaid by the end of January, I would expect that the item would come before council in advance of that so that council can deliberate and provide further direction.
Thank you. If we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Could it roll call on this or can I just do a?
Can I repeat back?
Yes, please do.
Um, just for staff's clarity, the motion has three parts. The first part is to spend sixteen thousand dollars from the fund established for Winterfest. The second part is to loan five thousand dollars from the Economic Development Community Events Fund. Uh, fund eight two six three to the Winterfest Fund?
That is correct, to be paid by the end of January.
Out of proceeds from Winterfest?
Out of proceeds from Winterfest. That's correct.
And then the third part is to donate five hundred dollars from eight two six three to the Winterfest Event.
Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred?
Yes. Based on the current numbers that Carolyn provided, I believe that we would have just under a six hundred dollar deficit. So that would cover it.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying your motion, Councilmember Burris.
I guess I, yeah, okay, Caroline seconded.
And um, Madam Clerk, the mayor has requested a roll call vote. Could you please take the vote?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember Burris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Douglas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Caroline McCully? Mayor Sean Loman?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, good of the order. I'll kick us off and just wanna say the only thing I had was uh, like to request that staff put an item on the agenda to um, do the donation for the soup kitchen in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is the amount that covers the tickets. I'm okay with a thousand too, that would come out of our community development and donation fund, nonprofit donation fund. And that way it gets to be more tickets at fifteen bucks a piece. So a minimum of seven fifty and uh, at least a thousand, I'd like to see a thousand though.
If that was a motion, I seconded.
That's not, no, 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 we're not voting on it. I'm just, this is just for good of the order. If you guys are okay and we're just discussing, I'd like to do that and request a thousand dollars go on the agenda for their fund.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Please.
Will it place you guys in any hardship if that check comes in after the event? Because our next meeting in December is just a couple of days before and sometimes check processing takes time. We, it will not cause you hardship? Okay, beautiful. So we're not in any time contingency. I support it going on the next agenda.
Actually, I was gonna say if that doesn't work, then we can have a special meeting beforehand.
Sensitive items, there are provisions in the Brown Act.
My mic's not on. Um, there are provisions in the Brown Act that do allow us to take items onto the agenda if they're of time sensitive urgency and we are only notified of it uh, within twenty-four hours. And so we did discuss that regarding uh, railroad days a couple of years ago, and then we discussed it again for another item. Uh, wanna say six or eight months ago. So if we needed to, we could have, but it sounds like we do not need to. So thank you.
Great. That was all I had. Kim, I'm sorry, take your story thunder there. Go ahead.
Yeah, very short, good of the order. We were talking about a plaque for Dr. Fox. I thought of an idea while we were here. Uh, what about if we bring him in here and make him honorary mayor for the day? And let him run another Winterfest uh workshop.
I'm gonna say I doubt he wants that hustle. Good idea, yeah.
You know what? Let's do that to some high school students. That'll be fun.
All right. Thank you, Cam. That's great. Larry?
No, nothing for tonight.
Thank you. Trinity?
No, I'll zip it.
Okay.
All right, I'm not, I'm not gonna zip it. Uh, no, this one's easy. So we have around town. Um, I don't know the official name of them, somewhat we'll call them the wave finding, wayfinding signs that have the beautiful black frame around them and the pale yellow signs that I know you guys did a huge study and we did a rebranding and all those kinds of things. And I like the font and I despise the pale yellow because it's really, really hard to see and the font is really, really tiny. And it's really hard to see in a car. And while it feels good to see the words, what is it? Explore, I think it's visit, explore and relive history. It doesn't help our downtown very much, unfortunately. And I want to say there's five or six of them. I can't remember. So that being said, um, I talked to a local sign guy about those signs and possibly what it would take to get them redone, keep the frames and everything the way they are, which are really nice. Um, but get something that is darker color, stands out and also uh, one that, that what we're looking at is reflective uh, stickers on it so that you can see them at night. And the two important words that I can imagine our downtown businesses would want, which are the words shop and dine. Because when we want them to come downtown, that's what you want them to do is walk around. Yes, they can explore history, but we want them to shop and dine into our, in our businesses. So this was the, I'll pass this out to the council. These are just a rough draft that he had sent out to me. Uh, an idea of what to replace them. It is, yeah, so we stick with the green because that is what, you know, the high school has is green. The yellow, it's yellow because it is a reflective material and it'll stand out and be really, really bright on it. Um, this is what his thoughts were. I have to say, I don't love, love, love the green, but it still stands out, especially when you're using that yellow, yellow that's reflective. Um, the one comment we have had is to make sure the arrows are much bigger on it. Um, we kept the trains on there for a little on the historic side of it. But um, I would love to be able to put this on the agenda to explore it a little bit further. This is, um, he looked at those signs. They are appealing, um, the stickers that are on there. So he did give us a quote for replacing the metal on it and putting the new signs up to go from there. But I love the designs of this, the, the way they hang, but those signs are too easily ignored with the pale yellow and the really, really tiny font that you cannot read when you're driving. So I would like to put on the agenda that we do some exploring into doing something that might do a little bit better for getting that traffic downtown, which is one of the things we talk about a whole lot is increasing traffic and the awareness of downtown. So I would request to throw that on the agenda.
I support seeing it on the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Um, city attorney, city manager, anything for good of the order? No?
No.
All right. Public comment on good of the order. Aaron, go ahead.
Couple things, um. I, Carolyn made a comment about how we need to get along and have a better culture. And one of the things that comes up over and over again that I wish that we could work on is this whole, you know, city councilwoman, um, McCully's nonprofit has is in a position to receive information that the rest of us can't receive. And, and to be able to say, well, I suggested it and I.
Sorry, hold on. I, I, we're supposed to stick just to the good of the order stuff. So just the things we mentioned. So if it's about the signs, that's cool. Or if it's about uh, the donations or um, what Trinity brought up.
Okay.
And Kim, I'm sorry, Kim brought up. Yeah, and Dr. Fox. So we, we can talk about this.
Sorry about that. Sorry. I apologize. Um, I would like to talk about the signs. There's a group of local business owners that are meeting on a committee basis to look at the signs. We are actively out re, uh, looking for grant money. We have multiple renditions of the signs. Um, we are working with Coco's Ice Cream on that particular project. Um, Harriet has been involved, myself has been involved. The whole Historic Downtown Association is actively um, working on that project and, and a proposal. Um, we've met with the Historic Folsom District. Uh, we've met with the city planner. So we are actively actually working on that now. And so we would love the opportunity be included in that conversation and not just a unilateral decision be made. Thank you.
No problem. We'll get it on the agenda. Make sure it's noticed and uh, we can talk about all the ideas. That's great. I'm glad that there's other ideas out there. Go ahead, Harry.
Well, since the pump has been primed. Forgive me.
This is what Parker shot over one of the concepts that we're becoming to a committee to look at. Our fellow. That's a shame. These people have a following. This here. They keep asking the same question, what the hell is wrong? Why doesn't Colfax keep their act together?
And as a matter of fact, somebody took them up on what they did because when you go to the little store at the Chamber of Commerce building, the, whatever that train thing is, that exists. And that exists on one seventy-four right by your house, Caroline. And we have another, another one that's the one seventy-four banner or sign. According to Ron, it's up in the attic. He's saving it for when a drunk hits the other one. He's got another one to put up. That was the quote. So to do this thing right, we gotta have a committee. It can't be one person's idea. This is what gets us in trouble every time. You wonder why I am, as you told my wife, why doesn't Harry like me? Well, this is exactly it right here.
Skip it to the subject, please.
You know, this isn't what I wanted to talk about at public comments, but when I saw that and I, my blood pressure went right through the roof. This is not the way to do this. It's, there's a lot of talented people in this town that can come, this is funny to you? Why is this funny? I, I, I don't understand why you think this is always funny. We are talking about the subject. It's my two hundred and fifty-four minutes left. What I can't understand is why we don't take advantage, not just me. There's plenty of people that have experience in here. My God, I mean, why does this have to be a one man show? I don't get it. And then you wonder why it isn't just me. That's a false thing.
Thank you, Harry.
Sonia Keller representing Seroptimus again. Wanted to give a quick update to you, and I don't know if everyone was aware. But Seroptimus International of Colfax hosted the November elections at Veterans Hall. We manned it. Um, we had to go through a six hour training. Um, we had twenty-one volunteers, all of which had to complete a six hour training and get fingerprinted. And it was your Colfax Seroptimus that manned the elections uh, November first, second, third and fourth. I'm happy to say we got extremely high marks from the Placer County Elections Office. Um, they would call us with anything we did wrong and which was very minor. Um.
I gotta make this fair because I said, uh, we gotta stick to the stuff on good of the order. So let me just say I voted. Okay, good of the order covered. Thank.
Okay. Does that mean I can't continue? Okay, okay. So really high marks. Um, we didn't have to call the sheriff department at all this year. I heard the previous election, they got called a couple of times. Um, everything went very smoothly. Um, November fourth election day, we probably saw about six hundred people go through. So that was a really high number um, for a daily count. Uh, two hours into the process on November fourth, our one scanner decided to overheat and shut down. Um, but we worked through that and got it up and going again. So I just wanted to let you know that that was a huge commitment for our small club of eighteen to take on that election role. And we did it and we rocked it. Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
Okay, this is exactly what I was talking about. Somebody comes up with an idea, whether it's a councilperson or whether it's public. And they put it out there. It does not need to be hostilely attacked. Nobody knew. She came up with an idea, put it out there. You guys obviously have been working on something. Didn't know that. Did anybody else know that? You say you're working with Cocos. Okay, that's fine. But you looked me in the face after a meeting a few weeks back and told me flat out that you avoid.
I gotta.
Working things.
I gotta, I gotta rate it in. Yeah, we can't have a discussion. It's just caught, just sorry. Yeah, it's just a, it's, it's just straight comment on, straight comment on this stuff.
Everybody needs.
Caroline?
Take these ideas.
Caroline, I gotta, I gotta stop you. Sorry. I gotta keep it to just the good of order stuff. Otherwise I gotta let everybody comment. Yeah, it was, but. No, unfortunately, no. Um, I, I made the exception for the voting thing by adding something to get my good of the order. So it would kind of slide in there. Um, just one more good of the order comment. Could we be included? Could you email us when you have your next sign meeting so we can help collaborate with you guys? It, it would be great to be included. It's, I, I definitely want to see that uh, the discussion happen freely between everybody. So if you don't mind, at least send me an email and then I'll, I'd love to be there. Okay, um, any other comments on the good of the order items? No? All right. Closing public comment on that and we're adjourned for our regular session meeting. Uh, we do have, we do have, yeah. We do have uh, closed session items tonight. If anybody would like to provide any public comment on our two closed session items, we can take that right now and then we'll uh, adjourn to a closed session after a brief recess. No public comment on, on closed session items? All right, we're all set. We're gonna take a five minute recess and we'll, or seven minute recess and we'll adjourn to a closed session after that. Thank you.